Like the two R-55 canoe, and that started on the river of properties. I just go, you know, and I, I do know that Texas Roadhouse will be open tomorrow. Good evening, welcome to the September work session with the City of Hyrum. Pastor McGrady, would you like to start us off?
Let us pray. Father, now as always, we come in Jesus' name, asking God that your wisdom and your knowledge lead your people, your appointed elected officials tonight. We pray, God, that your spirit overrule and ride anything that is not of you. We thank you tonight, God, because we can trust you, we can depend you, depend on you, and you'll never let us down. I pray, Father, you lead us and guide us, in Jesus' name I pray, with faith believing. Amen.
Amen.
Let us all stand.
I declare thee to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, September.
Good evening, I'm sorry, just running them out. How are you doing?
Thank you, Cliff. First order of business? We have our new deputy city clerk, China Pryor. Could you come up for a please sec, China?
Do you want to go down there?
I am not.
You can't.
I'm only half as dumb as I look. I want to share a couple of highlights with China. She started back with us back in July 21st of this year, and since then, she's been to the clerks' training, September 7th through 9th. Training consists of instruction on the clerk's job duties, required functions. The 15-hour mandated training counts for two of the 100 and one hours required to become a Georgia-certified clerk. She has also completed elections training. Everybody sitting better? She's also completed municipal elections certification training, which consists of over 10 modules on education tests requiring a grade of 80 or higher to each one. The city's Facebook page has seen an increase in followers of over 4,500 total followers now, with nearly 100 new followers since she took over the Facebook page. So, thank you, China, and now we will administer the oath, so raise your right hand. Do you, China Pryor, a citizen of Balden County, and being an employee of the City of Hyrum, Balden County, Georgia, and the recipient of the public funds for services rendered as such an employee, solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Hyrum? Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Hold you up.
Yeah, good. Somebody needs to hold me up.
All right, are we ready? One, two, three, one, two, three.
Three, two, one.
Three, two, one.
Thank you, Michelle. Now, Principal Black, you would come up, and we will do the Hyrum Elementary School Citizen Citizenship Award Ceremony.
Good evening, thank you once again. We're so excited to be able to celebrate our Hyrum Hornets through City Council, and we have some exciting students to start off our year, so thank you once again for allowing us to do this. I also have Ms. Brochus, one of our assistant principals here with me tonight. I brought in some reinforcements, so. Our first student comes from kindergarten. Aiko is an example of what it means to be a good citizen. She always chooses to do the right thing, participates in class, and is always willing to help her teachers and her friends. She encourages others to do their best. She is very happy to be at school and always has a smile on her face. We are very happy to have Aiko as our representative for kindergarten.
Tonight, we're recognizing our first grade student, Susan Mendez. Susan shows good citizenship by demonstrating respect, responsibility, and a strong sense of community, both in and out of the classroom. Susan follows school rules, treats others with kindness, and is always willing to lend a helping hand, whether it's picking up trash around campus, standing up for a classmate, or volunteering. Susan sets a positive example for others. Great job, Susan.
I don't think this student made it tonight, but we're going to recognize Ms. Emma Lorenzo from second grade for her exceptional demonstration. Oh, I did it! I'm so sorry. We are going to recognize Emma Lorenzo for her exceptional demonstration of good citizenship in our second grade class. Emma consistently treats others with kindness and respect, and is always ready to help a friend, and brighten the room with her cheerful spirit and smile. Her thoughtful actions and dedication to follow classroom expectations make her a role model for her peers. She exemplifies what it means to be a caring and responsible member of our school community. Way to go, Emma. Your contributions make our classroom a happier and welcoming place for everyone.
From third grade, we're recognizing Noah Carter. Noah Carter is being recognized with the Citizenship Award for consistently demonstrating outstanding character and leadership. He is kind and respectful to classmates and adults, always willing to lend a helping hand. He follows directions, is responsible, and can be trusted to make positive choices. Noah serves as a role model for others. His hard work and dedication to doing their best each day truly exemplifies the qualities of good citizenship.
All right, from fourth grade. Anaya is simply the best representative of citizenship for our class. She consistently shows her citizenship by always participating in activities, goes above and beyond with being helpful, and follows the rules like the champion she is. Anaya can be looked at as a leader within our classroom, community, and keeps our room clean and is helpful to all her peers. We are very proud of Anaya Nungu for being our citizenship winner for fourth grade.
Our fifth grade student is Michael Orzoko. He is a model citizen in the classroom and beyond. He follows all directions and school rules and expectations, and he encourages his classmates to do so as well. In addition, he partners with another student in the class that has limited English. He works with, encourages, and helps without giving away the answers. Michael is a remarkable student, who also maintains a strong connection to his Hispanic heritage. He is a true leader at Hyrum Elementary.
Parents, come on up.
Can you come on up? No hell-wailing, one at a time. Come on, you can come up as close as you want. Teachers and staff, administration. Let's give them one more hand. Thank you so much, and teachers, students, you didn't go enjoy ice cream, you just wanted to say hi, but you have no school.
And one of the contributors for the Citizenship Award is the Museum of Flight at the Balden County Airport. We'd like to thank them for their participation. We have two proclamations to read this evening. Whereas October is recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness? Dr. Melton?
Sorry.
I didn't see her here. She snuck in on me. Whereas October is recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the Council of the City of Hyrum is committed to the safety and justice for battered women and children in this community, and whereas the Council recognizes that Shepherd's Rest Ministries Incorporated Safe House and Services for Battered Women and Children have provided shelter and services for battered women and children since 1997, and continues to serve the needs of domestic violence victims in the county, and whereas the Council recognizes that it will take a community effort to stop violence against women and children, and that the Shepherd's Rest Ministry is committed to educating the community on the complex issues of violence against women and children, and whereas the Council is committed to the formation of a seamless network of support for the victim and a seamless network of accountability for the perpetrator, we acknowledge that through county and community education and intervention, domestic violence will become an unthinkable crime in our community, and whereas the Council encourages the community residents to educate themselves about these issues and work to make the City of Hyrum violence free. Therefore, I, Frank Moran, Mayor of the City of Hyrum, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Month in the City of Hyrum.
This Friday evening, in the City of Dallas, where the fountain is in the gazebo, Shepherd's Rest, excuse me, is having their annual vigil light candlelight service, and it's a walk that starts at 5:00. It's about a mile, mile and a half walk, and then back to the gazebo where we will be talking, and we have people who will be giving their testimony as survivors, and then we also have a young lady that lost her sister to domestic violence three years ago? Eight years ago. And she will be talking about her sister, so if you would like to come out and support Shepherd's Rest, it's this Friday in downtown Dallas. 5 o'clock is the walk, and then after the walk is when the candlelight service starts. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
I know.
This is National Literacy Month, September 2025. Whereas literacy is a fundamental human right and the foundation for lifelong learning, empowerment, and active participation in society, and whereas strong literacy skills are essential to individual success, economic growth, and overall well-being of our community, and whereas nearly every aspect of modern life, from education and employment to healthcare and civic engagement, depends on the ability to read, write, and communicate effectively, and whereas the City of Hyrum recognizes the importance of promoting literacy and supporting educational programs and the partnerships that encourage the reading and learning at all ages, and whereas September is recognized nationally as National Literacy Month, bringing awareness to the importance of reading and literacy and the need to support efforts to help those literacy gaps, and whereas the Mayor and City Council of the City of Hyrum wish to encourage the schools, libraries, community organizations, and citizens to engage in the activities that promote literacy throughout the month of September. Now, I, Frank Moran, the Mayor of the City of Hyrum, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as National Literacy Month in the City of Hyrum. I see Post 3 Commissioner Galloway just snuck in the door on us. Pastor Paul Coats?
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Paul Coats. I am the pastor of City Gate Church, currently located in Powder Springs. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share a vision I have to reach the community, especially the children of the area, with what I consider to be life-changing truths. These truths can help set the course of the next generation. The world is full of voices, all competing for our attention, Hollywood, music, internet influencers, and our government, to name a few. The Bible says that the blind lead the blind, both will fall into a pit. I believe the Word of God is the only constant in our rapidly changing world. Unfortunately, today, there are many different perspectives of the truth. The truth has been overshadowed by the divisions we have created. Everywhere you turn, there is division, starting with the division in the home caused by divorce, loveless marriages, and fatherless homes. It is my firm belief that without intervention, the next generation will continue on the course we have put them on. That course is leading to an ever-deepening division based on race, gender, political stance, and morals. My goal is to teach the children of the area four basic truths that I hope all believers can agree on regardless of what has divided us. My focus is on the children of the area because polls have shown that between 80% and 94% of people who live for God made that decision by the age of 18. The harvest is plentiful, but the workers are few. We must do better pouring our time, money, and energy where it will do the most good. Our children do not need to hear racially or politically charged opinions from the pulpit. I believe there are three fundamental truths that, if accepted, will change the course of the next generation. They are God is real, God loves you, God has a plan for your life, but you have to choose it. This simple message belongs to everyone. If our community is going to thrive, not just survive, we must put them on a course towards unity. Our children literally are the future. My church and I have invested countless hours and some money to develop a means of getting the attention of the community. In the age of technology and entertainment we live in, it is very difficult to capture the imagination and curiosity of our society. Our answer to this problem is to capture the attention of a child, and parents as well, with some technology. You should have in front of you some photos of what we are having made right now. What you are looking at is an inflatable spaceship that is approximately 43 feet by 41 feet. It is big and will draw attention. Inside, it will be an immersive experience utilizing a large screen in front and two screens, one on either side. Basically, it's just a tech-heavy classroom where we will tell the stories of the Old Testament and relevant lessons from the New. I am painfully aware that not everyone will agree with me on what truth is. People will divide themselves into many categories, but God only sees two, those who believe in Him and those who reject Him. The Bible says, "The fool says in his heart, 'There is no God.'" I can only try to be an example of God's love to such a person, so they can see His love through me. I have come here this evening because I have this vision burning inside of me, and I can't find a suitable place to meet. My original plan was to meet in schools, as they have everything necessary to accommodate our needs, which includes a parking lot big enough for the spaceship. So far, this plan has been unsuccessful. During one conversation, it was suggested that the schools were trying to get rid of the churches that are currently using their facilities. In my opinion, this would be a terrible disservice to the community. I am definitely drawn to the Hyrum area, and it is my first choice. I am afraid, however, that without intervention, my plan will be forced to be moved elsewhere. Honestly, my hope is that after hearing the plan, someone will intervene from the school system or have an alternate idea within Hyrum. Once again, thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Hi, Dylan. Thank you for making Hyrum your first choice. I'd like to start with that. When we initially spoke, I did not follow through with two questions. Is this going to be a pre-registered kind of process, or is it open to the public because it changes the operation of how we conduct business with our nonprofits? So, I failed to ask you that when we spoke last week.
Well, it is a nonprofit organization. I had never considered pre-registering anything, but in order to get the plan off the ground, I'd be open to anything.
And we have our city clerk, Melissa Choswood, who could walk you through the process, whether you are doing the pre-registered option or if it's going to be open to the public, but thank you for bringing that service and considering us as your first option.
The pre-registered would be something you all have to decide when you talk later about the 76 C.
But getting the idea of what the requirements are for special use permit would come if it's open to the public?
That's the difference, if it's open to the public or not. So, if it is a pre-registered, which is a private event, that's something you'll discuss about the use of Seaboard Street. There are no policies right now for the use of Seaboard Street for a public event, I mean, for a private event.
My preference is definitely open to the public.
Okay.
But definitely. It's a church, so, yeah.
And how many, did you say, would be accommodated with this, with the spaceship?
That would hold probably 60 kids.
Okay.
Is it a permanent fixture?
No, no ma'am. It is an inflatable, like the jump houses that you see. It's not a jump house. It's just a portable building that, when it's inflated, looks like a spaceship, and I believe will draw attention. That's what it is. It's just a classroom.
And I believe he is interested in where our churches offer Seaboard, the paved area? 76 Seaboard. I know you said you wanted a little further closer to 92 for visibility, but we don't have anything on 92 besides the events place.
No, we didn't, no. The events place is out of commission. We're getting ready to start work over there.
Well, that's my preference.
Okay, thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
The City of Hyrum will hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment regarding application 2025-08-Z, City of Hyrum by Treighton LLC, to rezone 63.79 acres to a mixed-use development, MXD. The properties are located on and along the southerly and southwesternly sides of Rosedale Drive, and easterly and westerly sides of Seaboard Ave, and easterly side of Hyrum-Douglasville Highway, and the southerly side of Highway 278, land lots 609, 615, 616, 681, 682, and 683, District 2, Section 3, City of Hyrum, Balden County. The full procedures for a public hearing have been made available to the public in the lobby of this building as well as on the website. Anyone in attendance at the public hearing wishing to speak on behalf of or in opposition to zoning applications that are on the agenda must be recognized by raising their hand, and they will be asked to state their name and place of residence, and then to sign up on the sheet which is located at the door, and I have it here. The person recognized to speak will be allowed to speak on any point relevant to the application being considered. Proponents and opponents shall be given a maximum of 15 minutes for each side to present its case. Any groups which are present are encouraged to choose a spokesperson to present their views. The mayor may request representatives on each side to speak for the entire group. If more than one speaker represents a group, the 15 minutes shall be divided among the various speakers. Speakers are encouraged to refrain from presenting information that has been previously stated by others. In no case, however, shall any group be allowed more than the allotted time, no matter how many speakers represent the group unless extended by the City Council. A designated staff member will be responsible for keeping time. Questions asked by the mayor and council, and the responses to such questions, shall not be counted as part of the maximum 15-minute presentation time limit. No further public input will be allowed without the consent of the City Council. Each speaker will speak only to the application before the City Council and shall address remarks only to its members. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks on any other speaker and shall refrain from the discussion of facts or opinions irrelevant to the application. The mayor may limit or refuse a speaker the right to continue if the speaker is being, after first being cautioned, continues to violate the subsection. Cliff, would you please spend staff recommendations?
City of Hyrum staff recommends approval of the application 2025-8-ZCOH by Treighton LLC to annex 63.79 acres into the city limits of Hyrum, Georgia, with the following 26 stipulations, and there were following 26 stipulations, and as an additional, three that were added, I would like to read for everyone, because this is a fluid agreement. Number one, the additional, Treighton Homes agrees that age-restricted homes can and will be gated. Number two, Treighton Homes agrees to configure the green space or the open space in the age-restricted section to allow for wider path access to the Silver Comet Trail. And again, I said, this is fluid. The third one, there will be... The third one, there will be, there will be buffer standards implemented on this development.
This went back to the Paulding County Planning Commission in June twenty-fourth and they also recommended approval. Am I correct?
Yes. Correct, thank you. Thank you for the correction. Yeah, it was denied by Paulding County for a different reason. It was denied by Paulding County Planning Commission.
Can I, I'm sorry, on page sixteen of our packet, it says, "Based on the preceding analysis, staff recommends approval." Is that Hiram or Paulding County?
How Paulding County presents, and Jody can clarify this for me, they present a proposed decision, then actually in the meeting, a decision or a recommendation is made, and Jody can, Jody Palmer can clarify that for me.
Paulding County Community Development Staff gave a staff recommendation to the Planning Commission to approve with listed stipulations. The Planning Commission ultimately voted to deny. It still goes before the Hiram City Council because you're the final decision-makers with that. We generally follow suit with staff recommendations with some amendments if necessary. So you have the staff recommendation from the city being our zoning administrator for approval with the listed stipulations, the three additional that he just gave.
So just so that I'm clear, I'm sorry, so as far as Paulding County staff recommended to approve, but then the board denied?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, because unfortunately, our paperwork says that the Planning Commission received a recommendation for approval.
We did have a staff.
We can't hear y'all. We can't hear you.
Heidi, so what we were, what I was clarifying was that Paulding County staff agreed to approve the recommendation and then the board denied it, but there was an approval from the staff, Paulding County. This was my question of clarification.
Thank you, because that's exactly what I was trying to get through.
Paulding County has a staff of professionals in community development that review applications. They then make a recommendation whenever each application comes before the Planning Commission as to approve or deny, and they'll also recommend stipulations to those applications to mitigate situations or aspects of the development that they feel would be impactful to the county. So in this particular instance, as an example, Paulding County's community development staff reviewed the application, recommended approval with about seventeen, I believe, listed stipulations. It went before the Planning Commission. They ultimately made a motion to recommend denial for it to be forwarded to the city council for their consideration, which is where we are tonight.
Is there any way we can provide the public with a reason why it was denied on the commission level?
Not the commission.
Not the commission, I'm sorry, the planning and zoning.
The Planning Commission, we don't have a, my own?
Your own.
Your own. We don't have a specific detailed statement of why they deny. The vote was to deny, though.
Okay. And I know it's not necessary, I wasn't sure if we actually had any of that information to share. Thank you.
Will the applicant or agent of the applicant please present their request for the granting of their application?
I'm gonna do my best, see if I can't get this a little closer.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
That's fine. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleased to be here before you tonight. My name is Kevin Moore. I'm here and represent Treighton Homes in this application, both for annexation and rezoning, the annexation of a portion of the property, not all sixty-four acres that are involved. This is an application by Treighton Homes for a rezoning of the property to your M X D, mixed-use zoning designation for a mixed-use community. A couple of things about, I just want to highlight some of the facts about what is being presented to you. It's shown on the site plan, on the screen now that people can see behind me as well. This site plan is what is submitted for your consideration is a total maximum of two-hundred-and-forty-nine homes as well as commercial slash civic space or non-residential space. Those two-hundred-and-forty-nine total homes, to give you some perspective as well, this initial application was over three-hundred-and-fifteen homes. It has since been reduced, even since what was presented to the Paulding County Planning Commission. There's community meetings that have been held, there've been many, many conversations that have occurred, certainly a good deal of conversations and meetings that have occurred both with the county community development staff as well as your own professional city staff to arrive at the reduction that you see here tonight. This reduction represents over a twenty percent reduction in the total number of homes that are being presented for your consideration for a final decision. A good number of that came from reducing or eliminating a town, the townhome component. The residential portion of this property, the two-hundred-and-forty-nine maximum total homes consists of, first, detached, single-family homes, second, detached, age-restricted homes, and lastly, townhomes. There are small pods of townhomes of the two-hundred-and-forty-nine homes, only forty-six homes are townhomes. So it's been reduced to two small pods in a couple of locations. You can see that actually is kind of highlighted on the, on the site plan so that you can see where that is. That's shown in the pink is where the townhome sections are located. The remainder of the property in terms of the residential development as for single-family detached homes. If you're looking at your screen on the right-hand side, though, that's a single-family detached portion of the property. That's to the east of Seaboard and just on the, I guess, south or west side of Rosedale. That section, which is on your right-hand side, has been designated now for an age-restricted portion of this community. So this mixed-use community, just in terms of what's being proposed to you on the residential portion, not even getting to the commercial portion yet, is truly mixed-use even from the residential standpoint, containing single-family detached homes, containing detached, age-restricted portion of the community as well as townhomes, all done in a very intentional design so that it all works together as part of an overall mixed-use development. I want to draw your attention also because it's important, it's an important part of your mixed-use development ordinance, the M X D ordinance itself calls for requirements that M X D is more than just a mixture of residential uses, it also must contain minimum amounts of commercial space, be it commercial, non-residential, civic space. It groups those together so that it can be used for those functions. We've designated those areas primarily along ninety-two, which is on the left-hand side of your screen where the site plan is on the front where you have our, one of the main entrances coming in off of ninety-two. That is the area that has been designated for the commercial or civic area as well as open space areas as you come in so that it's a very usable area, not only for future residents of this community, but also as a very viable commercial or civic area along ninety-two. That area that we've designated there is over five acres in size. So it's a sizable chunk, a sizable piece of this proposal that is designated for non-residential commercial civic space. There also is a smaller commercial segment that is located on Seaboard adjacent to the Silver Comet Trail. That's also designated for commercial slash civic space, which we think is a great location for a type of smaller business that could be used in conjunction with those who use the trail as a potential trailhead, a stopoff, a place you can rent a bike or a place that you can grab a quick drink and so forth on your way on the Silver Comet Trail. Again, very thoughtful and intentional to try to understand how that works as far as the entire mixed-use development itself. Also, as it relates to the Silver Comet Trail, which is along the bottom of this site plan on the southern side of this development, we have proposed two connections to that Silver Comet Trail, which is also in keeping inconsistent with the standards that you have in your M X D or mixed-use ordinance, one on the left-hand side and one on the right-hand side. And you've heard, actually, Mr. McGrady, speak to the one that's on the right-hand side of your site plan, which proposes a Silver Comet Trail connection, that that be in fact expanded in terms of making it a wider, more open space connection from that portion of the development overall, which we are in agreement with. Little bit about the mixed-use development, the Treighton Homes for Sees here. When you have this mixture of uses, the commercial, civic space, a great number of open space park areas that are well distributed throughout the proposed mixed-use community, it's a very intentional type of design that's being employed here by Treighton, by Treighton Homes. It creates a community within the community of Hiram, creates a community that becomes a sense of place, creates a community that becomes a neighborhood, creates a community that's one that adds to the sense of a community that Hiram and the City of Hiram has. When you look at where this property is located, this is an extremely unique situation. This is sixty-four acres that's been assembled. This is an assemblage of multiple, multiple properties and property owners that is very unique in the sense that it's going to be extremely difficult, if ever, that such could be assembled again to create a sixty-four acre continuous track in this particular location, given that it's on the north side of the Silver Comet Trail and south of two-seventy-eight where you have the intensity of the commercial that connects those two really known uses and land tracks, that is, the commercial along two-seventy-eight and the Silver Comet Trail. And what's on the other side of the Silver Comet Trail is this downtown of Hiram, which this obviously connects directly to. So it has a very unique location and context for a mixed-use development because it can provide that transition from two-seventy-eight to your city core and provide not only additional residential mixed uses that complement what you can do with the City of Hiram downtown, but also complement this particular area in and of itself. The zoning of M X D and the uses that are proposed here are not dissimilar or out of context with surrounding zonings and uses, certainly from a transition standpoint. Just on the other side of the Silver Comet Trail, south of this property is Seaboard Township, also a townhome community. So this is not a type of development that is a fish out of water, far, far from it. It's one that looks to the future and says, as a mixed-use development with the quality of mixed uses and the quality of residential uses that can be placed here and developed here, can develop a wonderful, high-quality community that adds to the City of Hiram. In addition, we have, as mentioned, I think it's a total of twenty-six or twenty-seven conditions that we submitted as part of a letter that was dated September twenty-fifth, and that's what Mr. McGrady was also referencing. In addition, city staff has recommended three additional conditions, all of which we're in agreement to, and I don't want to go through thirty conditions individually, but I do want to highlight a couple of key components that are also consistent with your M X D, mixed-use development ordinance. This entire development is controlled by a property owners or homeowners association, including the commercial is tied into that as well, with very specific covenants, mandatory fees, mandatory participation that controls this development, not just from the outset, but well into the future. That protects not only the surrounding community, but protects the residents and the future owners that are a part of this community in terms of their value, values and price points and in terms of what's being built for architectural purposes and otherwise. It also ensures that the mandatory homeowner association pays for and is responsible for the maintenance of the private, of all streets which have to be private under your ordinance. In addition, it has to pay for, maintain and be responsible for upkeep and maintenance of all open space areas and every other type of areas that you see that are considered common space areas as part of this development. That's also intentional, it's consistent with the very good ordinance that you have in the mixed-use ordinance itself. The, the overall mixed-use development that can occur here with approval of this rezoning is one that we believe would be and bring high-quality, planned, intentionally designed residential community to Hiram and specifically to this point, to this location, which has a great context in terms of what surrounds it and where it can be, the connectivity it has to multiple roads, the connectivity it has to two-seventy-eight, to ninety-two, and importantly, even the pedestrian connectivity it will really enjoy to downtown Hiram. And I think from that standpoint, it presents a spectacular design under your M X D ordinance. Lastly, as part of those many stipulations, we did want to make sure that we highlighted that one of those, and it was developed at the Paulding County Planning Commission when it was proposed then, there will be a five-hundred-dollar per home contribution to the Paulding County School System for each home during permitting when that occurs, and that's something that was also recommended by cities, recommended by county staff initially and also by your city staff that we follow in concert with that. In addition, the stipulations and conditions include an overall rental restriction, capping rental of the homes to no more than ten percent of the total number of homes, and also eliminating short-term rental and prohibiting short-term rental, call it your Airbnb short-term rentals within this community as well. The community will be fully buffered, fully landscaped, fully managed, and will be a high-quality community by Treighton Homes. Treighton Homes, if you're not familiar, has been here for fifty years, developing and building subdivisions in communities and homes in Paulding County and Cobb County for the last fifty years, locally owned and operated and still that way today. They're a great, fantastic example of a local home builder that builds communities and knows how to build communities in Paulding County, the City of Hiram and the surrounding areas. We think they would do a fantastic job. I can answer any questions that you may have and certainly happy to do so and certainly would respectfully request your approval of the application before you with all of the recommended stipulations, the ones we have provided, the ones that staff has recommended, and ask and respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
I had asked, I had asked this question before, but when would, how long before you would move the first piece of dirt? Your timeline.
Sure. Timeline would be, you would not have development starting here until probably the earliest would be the beginning of next summer, end of next spring. By the time you have the civil design and engineering design and permitting design and the things that you have to do to bring this type of thing forward, including the closing of all, all parcels, that's the timeline would be, earliest would be next spring, late, late next spring or early summer would, development would occur. But also I think it's important to note, because I think you asked about timeline, and it's not just when it would start, but what is the overall situation in terms of phasing or when it is built? A lot of times, and I understand folks, they look at something like this and they say, they see the number two-hundred-and-forty-nine homes and it seems overwhelming, but it's not two-hundred-and-forty-nine homes that are suddenly being built with homeowners in them next year. That's not how this occurs. This actually would be phased out over three separate phases, the final phase being completed and is projected in twenty thirty-three. So it's three phases of project over a six-to-eight-year period of time that would occur for the full two-hundred-and-forty-nine homes to be built and sold by that time. So it takes time to do that. It's not just dropped on a community, it's built in, within the community over time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
All right, thank you.
Oh, hold on, I thought there was some questions over there. I do have some questions. I know there's been some revisions to the concept, to the plan, and I know you've reduced and I greatly appreciate it and I think, I apologize all. So I understand there have been some revisions on the concept map and I understand it's fluid. So putting eyes on this once again, can you please, are the yellow colored homes, are those the, is that the gated restricted community?
So what you're seeing with the yellow is where it was, that portion of the plan was changed. It did have townhomes in that portion. Those have been changed to a single-family detached homes in that portion. Over to your right-hand side, which is on the other side of Seaboard Avenue, between Seaboard and Rosedale, that section would be where the age-restricted section would be, that would be, that's proposed to be gated as well.
So out of the two, I'm sorry, out of the two-hundred-and-nine homes, I know it's two-forty-nine, forty-six homes are townhomes.
Yes.
So that leaves two-hundred-and-three homes. Out of those two-hundred-and-three, how many are, are fifty-five are age-restricted?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. And where are those located? You said on the right side?
On the right-hand side, yes.
So is that with the green?
Yeah, where you see the green is where there is designated open space parks within that.
Gotcha.
And that greens, but where you see that portion of the development, that's, that is the designated age-restricted area.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
Of course, yeah, I should have picked up on the green, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. And you said, I'm sorry, with the ten percent cap for rental? And you said, I'm sorry, with the 10% cap for rental, if anybody has an issue, please say it now. I'm asking questions on behalf of the people that I work for that elected me. So I don't need to be re-elected, I'm already in, but I have questions because I still represent the people here.
Please.
So my question, and if I'm offending anybody, it is what it is. My question to you, the 10% that you said are capped at, you know, that the HOA will assure us, is there any guarantee that it could be restricted to age restriction for 55? How much faith can we put into an HOA board to cover us?
And first, your question doesn't offend me at all. I get this question quite often. And I believe the best way to answer that is, when you're looking at, well, how can we put so much faith in an HOA going into the future? Well, the best way I know how to answer that is, anything you look at in the future, let's first look at what's happened historically and how has that been managed and operated. And I looked at Trayton Homes, they have a 50-year track record in Paulding County, Cobb County, and other counties in the metropolitan Atlanta area, where they have built HOA mandated homeowner association subdivisions and communities, including age-restricted communities. And in each of those communities, to this day, the HOA, the homeowners association is strong, it continues to be strong, and the age-restricted communities, it's continued to be age-restricted. Yet you can only age-restrict according to federal law under the Fair Housing Act. And so it has to be set up in a very specific manner under the Fair Housing Act, so it's very difficult to change that come later, because people have bought in there for a reason. Likewise, in the strong communities that Trayton Homes has built, the HOAs remain strong, and it's a 50-year track record. So the best way I know how to answer that is, I don't expect anything different from them in the future by what they've done in the past.
Okay, I appreciate that last question, I'm, last question. The homes that are adjacent to the industrial businesses that we have near Metro Mont, are you still planning on building adjacent to a business that operates 23 out of 24 hours a day? And if so, what happens to, as a realtor, that would be a hard sell for me, to put someone in a house like that at a price point as what's offered. What happens to those homes if you cannot fill them with buyers?
Well, then that's going to be a business problem for Trayton Homes. They've looked at this location and studied it in depth for, it's now over two years, going on three years, to put this plan together. And they believe very strongly in the ability of having a community such as this that has the built-in amenities with the open space parks, the built-in active amenities, the built-in connectivity to the Silver Comet Trail. They do not view it as a sense of, we're going to walk in here and fail and have empty homes.
I'm sure no business does look at it in that approach.
They don't, but they, but they've been doing it for 50 years.
So my question, what happens?
So when you say what happens, I'm not sure.
So what, what will Trayton Homes do? If we have, will it be a pipe farm? Do we have homes that are just built? Are you going to decrease the price? What happens if you can't fill those homes?
If, it's a, it's a free-market system in terms of the homes and the home prices. So if they need to adjust home prices in order to sell homes, then they would adjust home prices to sell homes. I mean, they don't want to do that, and they wouldn't propose to do that, but they would need to do that to sell the homes. And they don't want them sitting empty and neither do you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Sure. Thank you for your questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in support of this application? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? We have several people that have signed up here. Keeping in mind, you have a total of 15 minutes, so if you want to pick a spokesman or if you want to limit your time so everybody else gets a chance. What's your name?
Hi. I'm sorry.
What is your name?
All I want to know is, do any of you live in the city of Hiram?
We all live.
Okay, you all live in the city of Hiram? Okay, that's all I want to know, because this concerns all of us.
Ma'am, ma'am, what is your name?
My name is June March. I live in Hiram too. And I vote no for everything.
We should raise it, do they live in downtown or are you a city?
I don't live in downtown, but I live in Hiram.
So do we.
So do we.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, esteemed guests and other members of the City Hall, City Government. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm not, does this thing?
Stand up.
Tighten. I'm standing. That was mean. Okay, I wrote something, I'm just going to read it because if I don't, I'll forget something. So many of us here have a lot of questions about this development, and these are a few, can y'all hear me back there? Okay. These are a few of the things that I think a lot of us are concerned about. Number one, schools will experience severe overcrowding. Traffic will be a nightmare in the downtown, on the downtown streets. Safety may be negatively impacted with so many additional people and may result in more crime. Emergency services, such as police, fire, et cetera, will be stretched thin. Quality of life for current citizens will be severely impacted in a negative way. Green space and calming buffers along roadways will be destroyed. Noise and disruption during long-term construction, which sounds like it's going to be really long-term, will be detrimental to the peace and quiet we all value, and the Silver Comet Trail crossings will become more hazardous and quiet recreational activities will be disturbed. Most of the downtown residents have either lived here, why don't I put my glasses on? That might make this go better. Why am I nervous too? I don't know. Anyway, most of the downtown residents have either lived here most of their lives or moved here specifically for the quiet, peaceful, quaint downtown atmosphere. Quality of life will be disrupted during construction and following completion of the development due to the drastic increase in population and traffic in our small community. Most of us are not opposed to develop, future development in Hiram as long as it brings quality-built homes to areas that will not be so negatively impacted. Building 27, well, you said now 249, new homes on just 64 acres is simply too much for this small area. We respect that the families who own the properties involved in this proposed development have every right to sell their properties, and we certainly wish them no harm. However, we also have a right to continue to live in a quiet, peaceful manner. Most of these properties are not currently part of the city of Hiram. Some of the property owners have lived on large pieces of property which afforded them privacy and quiet and possible tax breaks as well. They enjoyed not having people crammed up next to them for many years. Now, because they want to sell their properties and move somewhere that better fits their current lifestyles, we are expected to be happy about those properties now being annexed into our city limits due to the county denying the proposed development so that they are, so that they can be crammed full of new housing that will no doubt limit our enjoyment of the properties that we love and choose to remain in. I promise this doesn't go for 10 more minutes. The county turned these projects down for quite a few good reasons, now for reasons most of us cannot understand and that no one has explained. The city appears to be determined to allow this development in spite of all the reasons the county turned it down and in spite of our objections. Most of us are wondering why? Why? What is it, what is in it for the city government, for city officials, et cetera? That's a question I think should be answered. The mayor and city council are supposed to work to improve the quality of life for its residents and businesses, et cetera. What will this project do to create a better quality of life for the current citizens and residents of our city? If the council chooses to approve this project, in spite of our objections, it will eventually require adding more city employees to manage the safety and maintenance of the additional citizens, traffic, possible crime, et cetera. How will the city pay for those services? Property taxes, perhaps? Will current downtown Hiram citizens be expected to pay for these increases that we're so adamantly opposed to? Notably, not one of our city council members, nor the mayor, nor the city manager live in our downtown area. Consequently, this development will not affect their quality of life, yet it appears that they are determined to disrupt ours. With all due respect to our city officials, we are pleading with you, do not approve this development. These properties, these properties could be sold for other purposes that wouldn't so drastically impact our little town, like, you know, half-acre lots, 100 houses or something. If the thought is, look at all the other little cities that have built massive complexes of multi-purpose housing and retail, we just want to do the same in Hiram, please keep in mind that neither Woodstock, Powder Springs, Kennesaw, or Acworth had the concentration of major retail businesses in as close a proximity to their downtown residential areas as we have. Within about a two-square-mile area, we have a massive amount of very busy retailers, and we all know how many cars pass through here every day. If the thought is that we can increase our population to the point of catching up with Dallas, which I always wanted to, but it's a pipe dream, so that we can get more SPOSS money, we're never going to catch up with them. 10 years ago, our population was about a third the size of Dallas. It's the same now. We grew, but they grew. If the thought is that we can, sorry, I already read that. We ask that you consider all these things before you vote, and we also ask you to think about how you would feel if this was coming to your community. And finally, we hope that once you have sincerely considered all these factors, that you will vote no. That seems to be the only ethical thing to do, especially considering that the county turned this down. And I will add a note that I was told by one of our county commissioners, that he and another one of the commissioners advised that this was the worst project they had ever seen proposed to Paulding County, and they were against it, so, thank you. Do you, should I stay and answer questions or ask questions?
No.
Am I done? Okay.
Is there anybody else that's wishing to speak in opposition?
We've got one right here.
How much time we got left?
8:07, 8 minutes, 7 seconds.
I will be brief, okay? Hello to the council, and my name is Rosalynn Zito. I live at Walton Mills, which is right in between the movie theater and volcano, you know, right in that area. I don't think most of you are aware that there are over 300 more homes that are going to be built down by Walton Mill. Okay, so there's 300 more going on 278 and Bill Carruth, you know, in that area where LGE is, down to the Governor's Club. There's 300 more homes coming in, okay? And now we're going to this end of town and putting in 3, 249 more. I mean, this is ridiculous, totally ridiculous. I mean, imagine the traffic. You don't need a 50-page traffic survey to know that there's going to be traffic. Just stand on any corner on 278 and you can see the traffic, morning, noon, or night, okay? What about the schools? All these people coming in, there's going to be children. Are we going to build new schools, hire teachers, school bus drivers? Are we going to hire more police? I mean, these people are homeowners. Look at these people. These are the people that put you in those seats. These, these are the homeowners who put you there. And election's coming up in November, and some of you are up for reelection. October 14th, early voting starts up at the government center, and I'll be working there, so come and see me. And I'm telling you right now, November 4th is coming, so your vote counts. Your vote counts, come and vote. There is power in your vote. Thank you.
Ms. Zito, Ms. Zito, the 300 that are going up are the governor's, are apartments that are in Cobb County. It's Powder Springs that's putting those up. Oh, yes, there it is. Cliff, whoa, wait, Cliff? Wait, excuse me. Cliff?
I've been in contact with Powder Springs Government. Those 300 apartments that are being referenced are going to be incorporated by the city of Powder Springs that are in Cobb County. We'll come right up to.
We can't do it. Blue River is different.
I want to say one more thing. The other morning last week, the residents of Walton Mill were woken up by trees being cut down and backhoes coming in, and a bunch of trees were demolished between our residence and the movie theater, okay? We were informed that it was the county connecting sewer lines for the upcoming apartments that are coming in. Is this a done deal already? Why would they be connecting sewer lines for upcoming apartments coming in?
Those apartments are in Cobb County.
I'm not referring to those. I'm referring to these on Rosedale.
Oh.
I mean, we have gaping holes now in our trees.
I, I've never heard.
Okay? And it was to connect the sewer lines.
Jason, Jody?
Jody, you know anything about that?
Thank you.
She's talking about the homes next to the closed suitor, where those zoning signs are, on the other side of Jubilee.
Yes.
Those are the homes that she's talking about, that she just voted on.
The ones on 278.
They're on the 26th of August.
All right, there was a question about the trees being taken down. Jody, do you have an answer for that?
I believe, Cliff, did you have a conversation with Georgia DOT? That was our chief, okay, my apologies.
As far as what happened out there, as you know, there's been some issues with a piece of property, and we've been very careful to keep an eye on that one piece of property that we are trying to bring into compliance with our code. We found out after, as you did, that morning, that the county came out and cut down trees to improve the access to the sewer lines. They never explained to us why they were doing it, other than it was part of the improvement and the access that they needed to clean up that area to be able to access the sewer line. Now, where it came from, what you've just stated here, I have no knowledge of that.
That's what we would tell.
Okay, and I'm not sure who told you that, but in our case, the county told us that it was part of their routine maintenance to come in and make sure that they were cleaning those lines so they could get to those lines. And that's the last that we heard of that, okay?
How much time we have left?
5 minutes, 12 seconds.
5 minutes, 12 seconds. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak?
I will be very, very quick. I live on Seaboard Avenue, otherwise known as Grand Central Avenue. The traffic down through there right now is horrendous, and one thing I really heard was access to downtown Hiram. Well, where is, where is that access going to go? Right down Seaboard Avenue. There's so much traffic there, there's a school there, nobody pays attention to the school zone. We've put in speed tables and these Jeeps and everybody else that comes down through here. Because of GPS, I assume, they act like it's a play place. You know, they go across it to see how fast they can go across those speed tables. I sit there and watch them time after time, and I cannot tell you how many car parts I have picked up. I could have used car parts sale right there in my yard. That's all.
Ma'am, ma'am, can we get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Dorita Agor.
Hey, guys, my name is Mariana Escamilla. I live down on 439 Dallas Street, which is right behind the Ben Strickland Park. I just want to make it very clear that you guys already approved 300 and something homes on both on both sides of Jimmy Lee. I don't see room for this project, as you hear all of your residents that voted each and every one of you in. You have three options, postponing it until after the votes go in in November, which I believe is fair for everybody that you see here, because it's so close in time. Let's be realistic. I'm not... And then it gives Trayton Homes another chance to present a better idea than this, a way better idea, where we can find balance together. But doing this so fast before the votes, we should handle this after. And that's my honesty, my honesty to you and hearing everybody here. Don't make a decision today. There's nothing wrong with postponing it. What's a couple of more months? We've already done it for two years. I'm just being honest. Please listen to the people that voted you in. Please understand where they're coming from. They have been here longer than me. I've only been here five years. But I see that park every day. It hasn't been touched, except for the last two months. These people want to separate the people that can afford these homes away from the rest of us, when we're supposed to be one whole community. This is not giving that option. How do you expect one whole community when you have a business coming to create a divide? Not even the residents of your area of Hyrum can afford these homes. Please be realistic. Please don't make your vote today. Understand that it's important to postpone this until after the votes. Hear your people, the same people that have voted you in year after year, every four terms. Please, I've only been here five years, five years, and what I've been seeing and what I've been hearing, please, it's time to make a change, and the right changes. You're there because of us. Ms. Tiffany, I voted for you. But I will remove myself and let the next person come up. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Well, sometimes we get a plan, or a proposal, or an idea.
What's your name?
Sorry, my name is Ash Hava. I live over on Center Street, right by downtown. I've been a resident for about eight years in Hyrum. A plan or an idea can come to fruition, and then sometimes there's changes, there's tweaks, there's revisions, there's guidance that goes against it. And from what I'm seeing here, is that we had the county say originally, ah, we don't really like that idea. We had the town hall meeting with Mr. Matt Allen and Richard Dancy, I might be mispronouncing the name. I'm sorry? Hart, thank you. The reception, several of you were in the room, was not stellar. The reception in the room tonight is not stellar. We're not getting exactly the strongest feedback for the plan. So, it looks like we've had a revision here now. We've gone from, what was it, 249?
279.
279, down to 249. It was stated that assembling land of this, this many lots of land is a hard thing to do, which I'd have to agree, is a very difficult thing to do. Years and years of work have probably gone into this plan. I recently learned standard practices for a development like this and many, you don't buy the land and then develop and get it zoned. You always get the plan approved first, and then you buy the land. To me, that kind of feels a little odd, a little disingenuous, if you've been working in a community for 50 years, you know you're going to work with this small town, the community, to get something proposed and finalized, you buy the land. You get that done first, but I guess that's against kind of how...
Mr. Mayor, that's the conclusion of the 15 minutes.
I'll wrap this up within the next 30 seconds.
Next 30 seconds.
Thank you. So, within my area here of downtown Hyrum, which is going to be south of 278, east of 92, west of the city line, and north of downtown, looking at Paulding County property maps, there's 275 homes roughly, and that is an area that covers way more than approximately 60 acres. Zoning is about setting standards and protocol. Once we let the genie out of the bottle, it's done, just like it was said by Trayton. This is a lot of work, and this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I 100% agree. Once we take this land and we change and we develop it, that's it. It's not just the people in the room, it's not the kids in the room, it's the kids' kids. So, I would request that maybe we do, as proposed, take a step back, think about it. We don't need this many people crammed into a tiny area. That's all I have to say.
Jason, is it okay for me to ask if there's any other people in opposition that would want to speak, if not, so we can understand whether or not we need to extend the time? I know that's not favorable to some, however, I know this is such an important convers... piece of a decision that we're making, and if there are more people in opposition that need to be heard, I would like for us to consider extending that time. So, is it okay legally for me to ask?
What I would do is I would make a motion to extend time for a set amount of time, see if there's a second, and if there is, the council should take a vote.
I make a motion to extend time for the opposing party, as well as the party that is in favor of to have the time to discuss this matter, which is going to impact all of us.
For how long?
How long? Five minutes?
It depends on how many. I don't know how many.
You need to designate the amount of time.
What'd you say? You have a vote on it?
Five minutes?
Twenty.
Five.
Let's start with our...
Thirty.
Ten minutes.
I'll second.
I'll second. I'm sorry.
Have a motion and a second to extend the time for 10 minutes. All in favor? Opposed? Anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Audrey Hembray. I've lived in this community for 48 years. I won't tell you how old I am, but you surely can figure it out. I have watched Paulding County, I've watched Hyrum, go from... I can remember the first red light that went up. I can remember how huge it was when McDonald's was built. I can remember these things. I remember the community that we had. I can remember the... And Derek, you know what I'm talking about, community. We don't have community no more for various reasons. Nobody knows each other. You build these homes, and yes, the other homes that are at the corner of Popular Springs and Bill Carruth, that's even more people that aren't going to know one another. I have lived, I moved back in with my mom, gosh, eight... 18 years ago, and there was a time when everybody where I lived, we knew each other. Every single home. That doesn't happen anymore. People move in and people leave. I make it a point to try to let people know, hey, this is who we are, this is what we do. Nobody wants to know that. You go over here to Walmart, or you go to any stores around here, one, you deal with traffic. Just getting across 278 to go to Hobby Lobby is a nightmare, at any part of the time of the day, it doesn't matter. And then we're going to add this, right up here at this corner. Traffic is so bad right here. I live a mile and a half from this Walmart. I drive to Dallas Highway to go to that Walmart, for that very reason, is traffic. I drive to different... I don't even grocery shop in this area because of the traffic. Metro Mount, when they took all the buffer down, as y'all, I think somebody called it at one point, when they took all those trees down, I live right over here, over on the tracks, over on the other side of the tracks right here, I hear them every morning, every morning. I hear Metro Mount. Can you imagine the homes that are going to be built next to Metro Mount? I don't care what buffer you put right there. There's a huge buffer between me and Metro Mount, and I hear them every morning. It's amazing when they're not at work. It reminds me of what it used to be. I really, I really plead with you to listen to your public. When you go out here and you hear people talking of this, I have not heard people say, yes, let's do this, woo-hoo, let's go. No, I've heard nothing but negative comments on it. I cannot see how you can approve this, knowing the disapproval of the people who live here. I mean, the people who live here, here, where it's going to directly affect. I can't even imagine how long this is going to be. And then you're going to have 278, I mean, 92 being widened all at the same time, all this is going on? Seriously, this is, this is a horrible idea. And again, I agree with, I think it was Ms. Rollins, I feel for the people whose property this belongs to. I really do. I, I can't imagine what they've gone through, how long they've waited, I can't imagine the promises they've been made to. I can't imagine. But what I know is this is not the same Hyrum, downtown Hyrum, city Hyrum that I grew up in. And I know that change is what it is. I know change happens, I understand that, I'm not ignorant to that. But this is not the right change for this place right here. It's just not. I mean, no matter how many, how much you promise, the HOAs, individuals, humans, are going to be doing these HOAs. You don't know their attitudes towards anything. This is our home. I know my attitude towards this home. I stop and pick up trash sometimes. I see, I don't know your name, but I see you blowing leaves all down that road every time I go through here. It's not even her property. Why is that? Because we care about where we live, and we try our very best to take care of it. This is going to change Hyrum forever in a negative way. I don't see how any of you can see it in a positive way. I really don't. And if you do, please, reach out to me and explain it to me face-to-face. I would love to hear it. I really would. And I love your smile, I'm not sure what it means, but thank you. I pray that you will hear the people of this city. I really do. And I, so far, I've not heard anything in approval of this. Thank you.
My name is Pablo Gonzalez. I live on Terrace Trail. My thing, my thing is with this whole development, you got the 249 houses here, and 300 on the other side. Now, you got, the schools got to be built up, so in order for that, us to build, build schools, you're going to have to have, raise our taxes. Is the dry company going to contribute to the taxes, to build the schools and build the police force and the fire department? You got to take all of this into consideration. I know, you know, we're going, every, every, every place has to grow, but you got to think of it logically. You got to take all that into consideration and figure out where this money coming from, because Powder Springs, kids going to want to go into Hyrum School, and then Hyrum School's going to want to go into Powder Springs, just to keep up, because you know they're going to bring, you know they're going to bring kids, they're going to have kids. Our police force has got to get bigger, and the fire department. That's all I have to say. That's what, just look at, at that prospect, because somebody's got to pay for it.
Thank you.
I have the one to speak.
My name's John Largent, and we've all heard everything negative here tonight about this development. So, my question to y'all is, what benefit can this possibly have for the city of Hyrum, its citizens, and its taxpayers?
Well, okay. There aren't, there aren't a lot, if you can come up, there aren't a lot of people that understand the city budget, and I don't want to be the one to bring it up, but we only have X amount of revenue that comes into the city. A lot of people think that we get all this money for lost, the local optional sales tax. We don't. Our county gets $22 million of the money that is spent up in Hyrum. They get 22 million. We get about a million and a half a year, or a little bit more. That's all we get. So, when you think about eventually someday, not tomorrow, maybe not next year, but maybe the year after, there has to be property tax. For 40-some years, the city of Hyrum residents have not had to pay any, any property tax, zero. You paid at the county. The city gets none of that money, zero. To me, and it's unfortunate I'm not running, because I have a family emergency and I can't, but I have a lot of fights still left in me. But what people don't understand, in five or six years, if Hyrum doesn't start finding a way to generate more revenue, all of you are going to be sitting in unincorporated Paulding County. You will not have the city of Hyrum anymore. That's all I have to say.
I'm sorry, we got, we have to keep order. Uh-uh, we're not doing that. We're not doing that. Nope. We got to keep, can we have control?
Yep.
My name is Pep Rollins. I used to be on the council here. My wife is the little lady that spoke the first time. She didn't introduce herself. She was nervous, and I'm nervous, but one thing, the main thing that I'm concerned about is the traffic, because the traffic is absolutely horrible already. It's horrible. And it doesn't matter if those homes are in Cobb County or whatever, because they're going to be on 278 all day long, up and down, going to the restaurants, going to work, going on 92. It's just going to make it way worse, and it's horrible, no matter what town, no matter in the morning, at lunch, at night, no matter what day it is. It's ridiculous already. And it's just, that's not going to help any. And I can understand that, I know we don't have city tax, and that's a good thing, but make, you know, if they're going to build something, build it somewhere that's beside right down here, but it affects all the people. They're already affected and can't do anything about the traffic already, and it's just going to get worse. And it's just going to affect, because the people sitting up there don't live in this general downtown area, and that's fine. I've got nothing against you.
I do.
Well...
I live behind the library on 92.
Okay.
I travel through it. I travel through it every day.
We can walk here from our house.
I can walk from my house.
So, but anyways, find somewhere else to build a project, not right here.
Next one.
Thank you.
Last minute forty-one. One minute forty-one seconds. We have one minute forty-one seconds left. Anybody else? Teresa?
The only thing I've got is why, everybody here is asking why. Why are a couple of employees, or maybe three, two or three of the city council going to make this decision for all of us when we preach that we don't know what else? I know it's pretty stupid. That is the thing I want to know. Who of y'all are going to vote for this? Tell us. All I've heard is that your friends with somebody that works for Trayton...
This is, this is not a vote-taking session. The vote on this comes next Tuesday. We're not, we're not pulling the council tonight.
All I want to know then is just why? Because nobody in this area wants it, except maybe a half a dozen of the ones sitting up there. Why should y'all give this when we're begging you not to? Begging you not to.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Excuse me for a minute. My name is Linda E. Meg Hunt Williams, alias Nano Hornet and Winnie the Pooh. And I'm just appalled. I've lived at the same residence for over 77 years. I can't imagine what the people that have moved in here, thinking... 77 years. I can't imagine what the people that have moved in here thinking this was gonna be is. I came up with my dad, sitting right up there, my adopted dad, sitting where you are, Honorable Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Time is concluded.
Well, thank you, sir. I had friends for years that were sitting on the city council. They all came through.
Mr. Mayor, the time is concluded.
Time is up, Meg.
Faith, faith, foolishness, and presumption, three things. It applies to life in every area. I ask you to think about it.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Mayor, one item, the applicant did have
additional time by virtue of adding additional time to the opposition. I would inquire the applicant to see whether he wants to use any of that additional time.
It looks like he does.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'll be very brief. You've heard from me enough already. The, but I did wanna at least present some additional thoughts for your consideration, especially based on the comments that were received. The, back to the property again. These are 12 property owners, 12 separate properties, multiple property owners consisting of 12 overall properties that are being assembled for the 64 acres. When you look at where this property is located and the surrounding uses, as has been noted, you have the power commercial uses that are along 278 in close proximity. So, this property is not situated for new commercial that would you consider to be first-tier commercial in and of itself. This property is in close proximity to Metromont and other industrial uses, many of which, as you get further this way, are not considered first-tier industrial uses. This property to be developed piecemeal in the future as industrial property similar to Metromont that's close to downtown. Whether you agree with this proposal or not, that would be a shame, and a crying shame. It should not be that, to have trucks of that nature continuing to use those roads as close to downtown as that would occur. So, when you start to look at this property and decide, what do you want to do with it? This is a chance to do a planned, designed, quality development under your MXD mixed-use ordinance, and one that allows for a development that will bring quality commercial or civic uses to this location, because it will have the residences to support it. Because these residents, when they buy these homes, and they live in these homes, and they have such close connectivity to downtown, it allows them, and they'll want to, they'll wanna be the ones that walk to their local merchants, walk to their local restaurants, walk to your local in downtown Hiram, because that's what they're gonna wanna experience. If they need, if they need something from Target, they can go get it. If they need something from Home Depot, they can go get it. But where are they gonna frequent, they're gonna frequent coming to Hiram? And the Hiram residents that are here in downtown will benefit from having that increased activity for all of downtown and for all of the community. This isn't a closed-off community. This got roads that intersect it, public roads that continue right down to the Silver Comet Trail. The whole idea of mixed use in this location is so that it actually benefits the entirety of the downtown city of Hiram area and city of Hiram period. That's what this development would do. It doesn't destroy one bit. What would be destroyed is the opportunity to do something highly constructive and high, of high quality with 64 acres that's sitting right next to downtown city of Hiram. That's what would be lost. Thank you for, again, for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of? You've already had your time.
In favor of.
Okay.
So, this unique development that we have, once again, my name's Ash Habba. I live over on Center Street. This unique development we have here, ah, yes, I would love to be able to walk down 92 to go to the restaurants. Oh, wait, you can't. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if he's not speaking in favor of the application, then he's not permitted to speak.
Yeah, you're not, you've already had your time, and it was anti. So, thank you very much. Have a nice night.
There was a way you could sneak it in.
Public hearing is now closed. All right, new business. Discuss the GMA loans for building construction renovation of office furniture. Michael or Cliff?
I think I'll begin on that one. The original agenda item was a placeholder, basically, to go ahead and establish what was discussed at the budget hearings and in the retreat with regard to repurposing of the 150 building that we have on Oak Street and the 855 building off of Hiram Douglasville Highway for the use of administrative offices. So, what will have to take place next, as you understood from those discussions and those meetings, is we would be looking to finance the cost of the renovations in order to defer payments over a period of 10 years through GMA, utilizing their GMA loan vehicle. Basically, I will have an approving resolution before you for next Tuesday to address this. But you have in your packet the costs that were acquired through the collective co-op agreements with Sourcewell and then Gordian Contracting. We've utilized them before. With building construction, it has been very successful for us. And those prices are listed in your packet. I think there were late-minute additions over the, cause we didn't receive the actual full numbers until last evening. So, you either will have them, or you already have them, but we'll have them for you by tomorrow morning if you don't have them in your packet. But they are part of the current packet.
Don't have them.
Okay. So, just to cover for, and this would be for the renovation and the furnishing of the facility. I will, I tell you what, I can, Cliff, do you have, I've got the numbers in front of me, but if you wanna go over that spreadsheet, you can.
The 150 Oak Street, the renovation cost for that, as Jody mentioned, from our prime con-
Page thirty-three, by the way.
It's in the pack? Okay. 150 Oak Street renovations, $293,000, $289.63. Renovations for the 855 Hiram Douglasville Highway building, $210.
$10,000.
Two hundred, I said everyone, 293,000, excuse me, for the 150 Oak Street building. $293,289.63 for the renovations for that building. Renovation for the 855 building, $210,254.8. The furniture for those buildings prospectively, 150 Oak Street, $104,982.81. 855 Hiram Douglasville Highway, $56,841.68. We have the total in it. We were considering which, how much contingency to add. We're definitely gonna do a 10% contingency for the renovations, which will make the renovations a total of $553,898.8. For the furniture, that was a total of $161,000, $161,770.49. And that's plus or minus a 5% contingency. That's still to be determined.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Cliff.
Melissa, page thirty-three is the fencing.
Discuss the removal of fencing and gates around Ben Hill Strickland Senior Memorial Park. Michael?
All right. So, when we presented the phases of Ben Hill Strickland Park, one of the very first things on there was the removal of the current fence and replacing the fencing in selected locations. So, we put the job out to bid to remove the fence, put, put up a new fence around the playground area and some high-use play areas for now. It's kind of a phase one of the fencing. And the, do you have a, you have a copy of the bids? The bid packet? Okay. So, we've had, one, two, three, we had six bids, and we are recommending to award the job to Amigo Fence and Stain for $107,396 with a contingency of $10,739.60. I guess that's it. You got any questions?
Which would be funded out of?
Parks and Recreation, Swasth.
I have a question. I said, I understand we're going to seek out contractors to remove the fence, but initially, a couple of years ago, we were discussing using our in-house employees to bring it to cut the cost. But why did we deviate from that?
One is, one is a convenience and time that it will take for somebody to quickly remove it, get it out of there, and install a new fence. That will not be the case if we did it in-house. It will take us, I don't, I can't estimate the amount of hours it would take to do it appropriately, including how it's concreted in the ground, and to store it, and then to figure out what to do with it. And then that's-
Can we sell it?
Probably sell it. I don't know how much for, I'd be guessing, again, an amount. But it's, it's the storage, it's the amount of time that it will take our six staff to do that. Again, ignoring everything else that we have to do during the process. And if we could hire a company that can come in and do it as part of the job, it's just kind of real quick, and it's done.
Could we possibly consider maybe giving our folks overtime pay to complete this project? No, can't do that?
We can, we can look at doing it ourselves.
Just as a cost-effective approach, I don't, yeah. How long would it take? Okay. I'll ask the questions later. I'll ask you.
I represent, my name's Tanner. I represent West Georgia Fence. We actually came in exponentially cheaper than Amigo Fence. We've had, we've got twice this experience. We've been there for 50 years. And so, I'm wondering why Amigo Fence is being voted here.
All right. We recommended Amigo Fence and Stain because they showed up to all the, both mandatory meetings that we had. One of them was required. And West Georgia was the cheapest bid. Amigo was the second, but they met all the requirements. But that was the basis of our decision. But we were offering up both West Georgia Fence and Amigo Fence. At least that's how we explained it to the bidders, is that we're gonna present those two on the bid tab, and then we'll go from there with, after discussion. But as staff, we were recommending Amigo Fence.
Thank you, Michael. And the park looks amazing. Just thank you again to you and your staff, Public Works. Our Homer Legged Park looks amazing. If you guys have not stopped by our dog park, do that. And hopefully, we will probably have a ribbon cutting. We'll discuss that hopefully. But it looks amazing, so inviting. Thank you, Michael, to you and your team. It's amazing.
All right. Thank you.
The Broad Street is beautiful.
Any other questions?
Discuss additional funding for the Harris Drive Roadway Improvement Project.
Michael? I do have that paperwork too. Okay. So, as we were, we're about to get really started on the Harris project after some utilities were getting moved. But while we were out there with the contractors, looking at all the utilities that had to be moved, including the water, what we found was a lot of mismatched water lines of different ages and different conditions. So, we were, as part of the project now, we were moving and replacing the water line up to the entrance of the Veterans Memorial. But what we're talking about here is extending a new water line all the way up the street. So, everything is consistent and matching. Least likely, we'll have to go dig up and replace, make any repairs sooner than later, I guess. So, the additional cost for that by the contractors, $25,635. So, that exceeds our contingency. So, we were asking to add, add that amount to the project, plus the 10% contingency.
So, by adding this amount, Michael, replacing those pipes?
Yes.
Would cut down on some future repairs and digging they would have to do?
It definitely would, because it's all, yes, it's gonna be new pipe. Everything's gonna be the same. And as we found this week, trying to work on a plumbing issue at Graysville Park, the lines running underneath are old lines that you can't even find parts for anymore. So, now we had to come up with a new solution to try to fix the water leak out there. And we feel that that may happen here. But this will be all new line, up to standards, reinforced, so that we can easily repair it if we need to, with less digging as well.
It also safeguards the improvements that we're already putting in place, so that when those lines, if we were to leave them as they are, and when they will and do break, we're not tearing up what we've already invested in. So, it preserves continuity of the improvement.
Yeah, I think I got the total amount. I should have it in here. I don't think, I don't think I printed that one, but I will have it next, next week. But basically, we're just asking for the additional money to cover this cost and add it to the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discuss electronic document management. Melissa?
So, during the budget work session, you all put in $102,027 for the electronic document management solution, based on a quote I had received from MCCI. Since then, I got a quote, an additional quote from Canon. And as you can see in your packet, they came in exceedingly cheaper. The Canon quote for backscanning, and backscanning is taking documents we already have, scanning them in, and what's called indexing them, which is basically filing them electronically for us. And that part of the project is to assist in our move, so that administration still has access to all the same feely-touchy documents that we currently have being in the same building. So, Canon for the backscanning, if we keep the documents, which I, I don't think that we're at a point where we're comfortable with destroying Jackie disappeared. But Jackie would have a fit. I don't think we're at the point of being willing to destroy our papers too, but that is $30,000 and some change to destroy, cause it's $28,581.60. And that's because they only have to do one trip versus round trip. Yeah. So, we're gonna destroy our documents after we scan them. She didn't hear you. She didn't hear me. Anyway, so then the setup and implementation with Canon is just about $7,000. And then the recurring fee is $3,000. So, that total, if we keep our documents, is $39,878.35. Then you go down to MCCI. Now, there was a little bit of a difference in the number of pages that MCCI estimated versus Canon. However, it was significantly different in the price. So, their backscanning is $68,120. The setup, $24,225, and the recurring fee of $7802, for a total of $101,47.25. I, myself, Jody, Elizabeth, she's our records clerk, but she's also worked for a backscanning company, as well as Michael, met, reviewed both of these proposals. I even sent a redacted copy to MCCI to see if there was something he saw as a huge difference in these two quotes, based on what they were delivering. They didn't come back with, to us, a definitive answer as to why there, there could be a huge difference. So, at this time, we would recommend Canon. And obviously, that's a savings between $102,000 budgeted versus 39, or we'll just say $40,000 for the project. So, big difference. Yes.
Discuss the sanitation ordinance amendment. Jody?
Again, this is some old business that we're trying to draw to a conclusion. This is a revision to the ordinance that, of course, I asked assistance with our esteemed legal counsel here to give the city the sole right of service for sanitation, which what you have in your packet is the product of that. Is there anything that you would like to add? It's very minor changes, little bit of a language change in a section or two.
So, the current sanitation ordinance was enacted in 2013. At that time, I wasn't here then. I assume we had a private contractor collecting the residential trash then. With the elimination of the private side and with the city- With the elimination of the private side and with the city taking it over, the new ordinance, the proposal is to get rid of the old ordinance and put a new one in place that simply reflects that we are providing that service. Here's our, here's our schedule of fees. The city reserves the right to franchise it again, should it deem necessary. But as for right now, it's really just to capture that and take the opportunity to get it updated. It's nothing of any real substance or big change, other than indicating that the city's doing it now.
Questions?
I have a question. How quickly are we gonna be able to start enforcing the ordinance?
We, well, Kathy, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
We're currently sending out, we're on the third. We've had two sets of letters go out, and we've had probably about 30, 35% response as far as signing up for new homeowners that were not aware of the ordinance. And we're now ready to send a different type of letter out, because the first two was more or less informative. And now the next set of letters are gonna go out with a little bit more authority. We're finding out a lot of homeowners or renters in which that poses a problem, because a lot of the times what we send to the homeowner, addressed to, you know, the property owner or something like that, instead of getting the name, because the renters, we don't actually have the name of the homeowner. But when we look on the public queue, the queue drive, I think, it just shows the owner's name. So we would readdress it to, let's say, residents, you know, occupied residents or something like that. We've put in their, the address now. Or the rest, I don't remember the exact form without off the top of my head. But that's what we're doing now, so third set of letters. We're a little bit more enforcement. In addition, once this ordinance is passed, a copy of it will go with that letter. That's what we've been holding off, doing a little bit more enforcing letter, so we actually can justify and show them the ordinance with that letter.
How many non-compliance do we have?
I don't have the exact number at this point. We've been working with several of the HOAs. Greystone, Derek Chase, we'll be working with their HOAs. They've been notifying their homeowners too, through the HOAs, that they have to get in compliance. We have, are, had a slow trickle now, so we've got to reinforce the letter. So that's why we've just been waiting on the ordinance. But once we get that going, because the ordinance, I believe, allows us a little bit more leniency to go after the renter too, instead of just the homeowner, which is what the previous ordinance didn't allow us to do.
It should pick up pace and then we'll address the individual lots that we have in subdivisions that are already part of the city, city service, and then address the pod developments, such as the cottages outside of Greystone.
I'm just curious as to how long we're gonna drag this out?
No intention to drag it out. Now, if we get this done, then we're gonna start moving with quicker, quicker pace to get it.
I'm completing my second year on the council, and we've been talking about this for two years. So I think it's time we got to push this to the forefront. It's income to the city that we're totally losing. And I'm tired of hearing, in my gated community, and those are people though, that everybody in my little circle pays the city a hound. And I'm tired of hearing two other garbage trucks come in on off days to pick up rental home. So it's time to push the button. Thank you.
Discuss the Faith and Blue Weekend events beginning July.
July?
Yeah, right. Friday, October 10th through Monday, October 13th, date Cliff.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I will be speaking very quickly and within time. We have done this last year with Chief Lea. You have in your package a banner, Faith and Blue Weekend, on the dates and times. Also, the second on the bottom I have here is a list of events. That Friday, the 10th, we have a noon prayer at a memorial. That Saturday, at Ben Hill Strickland Park, from 10 to 2, we have a Pavilion 3 at the basketball court. We have a 3-on-3 basketball competition and a 3-point competition. All the winners will receive this ring. Participants will receive this ring. The person who wins the 3-point competition will receive this. We've gotten support from our community to have these all ready to present. Again, Chief Turner is very supportive of these. Again, 3-on-3 tournament, 3-point competition. We have Pavilion 3. We're gonna use it as our children's pavilion. We also have a bouncy house that will be down there. We have two vendors also. So this will be a community event whenever, providing everyone, everyone to come out from 10 to 2 at Ben Hill Strickland Park. That Saturday, Sunday, 3 o'clock, we're gonna be at the amphitheater at Ben Hill Strickland Park having a 3:00 PM worship service. Again, all of this is part of the Faith and Blue Weekend. And then Monday, lunchtime sometime, we want, we're gonna do a meet and greet with our police department, Chief Turner and all. We have quite a few new police officers coming in. And we're gonna have a free barbecue here in our parking lot. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I have a question. Can council sign up for the basketball tournament?
Yes, ma'am. You can get a, you can get a team. Yes, sir.
All right.
And you don't have to play, but you can get a team.
No, I wanna play.
Yes, that's, that, you are more than welcome to come and participate.
You gonna be on my, you gonna be on my team?
Yeah, right.
You will be.
I'm gonna have to take the heels off.
Yes. Yeah, we are also, you don't have to bring three. We have some single individuals who will be coming, so we will, we will be making teams there at the event. So if you feel so inclined.
Derek?
If you feel so inclined, you wanna come and participate. Yeah, this, this open to the public. It's open to everybody.
Thank you.
Paulding County Sheriff's Department has inquired and they may be sharing with us in this weekend of events.
Okay, thank you, Cliff. Discuss the use of 76 Seaboard Street.
So we have been approached by nonprofit organizations requesting usage of some of our buildings, some of our city-owned structures, which are our buildings and park. The previous council made a decision to restrict the usage to for-profit organizations, which I feel we may be missing out in an opportunity to provide a place and promote our city. Maybe not so much in tourism, but however, they would come down here and provide services. So my question was, I forgot which organization it was. I believe it was a church, the gentleman that made the proposition to provide free services to our youth. I understand, well, I'd like to understand, is the Events Place off the record at this point?
Yes.
Because there's construction going on?
Construction.
Oh, so construction started?
It will be starting as soon as we get the funding and the lights.
So we don't have a definitive start date on it? Am I correct?
Not currently.
Okay, so have we bid it out?
Yes.
Okay, so we're waiting for funding. So at this point, we can allow our nonprofits to utilize Events Place, since it's not, the construction has yet to been started?
Will it be starting within the next 30 days?
In those terms, it was explained, you all, you all have already approved it. For nonprofits and other organizations.
The previous board did.
This board?
No, ma'am.
No.
You actually made the.
Uh-uh, uh-uh. Correction. Grays Mill was.
I thought you were talking about the Events Place.
Well, talking overall. So, okay, okay, so let's go, I'm sorry, the Events Place, you're right. We did, the current board.
You all are, you have a mechanism for nonprofits to rent it. It's basically for meeting space. And right now, we have there the Paulding Pioneers. So then that turned into a question about 76 Seaboard Street, which does not currently have any type of rental policy.
Okay. Okay, so.
Grays Mill is, was a decision made for nonprofits, to use it, not for profits.
Correct.
Has to be an event open to the public. And there's a usage fee of 300, plus they have to obtain a special event permit.
And that's for nonprofits?
It's for nonprofits only.
Okay, so I will go, okay, let's start with the Events Place. So we don't have a definitive start date on when the construction will happen, because we're waiting on funding. So at this time, we can allow our nonprofits' usage of the building or not?
If that's the council's desire, it would not be our recommendation.
They, they can follow the same procedure that the Paulding Pioneers are following, but it can't be in public. Those are only open for private events. So their members meet there to.
Okay. Okay.
The church, if they wanted to have a closed, private event, then they can do the same if they're nonprofit. Other organizations approved by you all via email, which was the policy set by you all, then they can do the same thing.
Okay. Prior to me learning of what the gentleman, the pastor, the pastor was requesting, he wanted outside space. So this is something that we can discuss now if we want, I'm sorry.
Well, it sounded to me like you want to a public event.
Yeah, so that's a different process.
Your permission for use of city property, number one, for a special event. Number two, him having to obtain a special event permit.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we can allow usage, the council can decide if we're going to allow nonprofits' usage of the church? If we had a nonprofit to approach, like Boy Scouts, say Boy Scouts, that used to use our city structure. If they wanted to start a troop again here in our city, we lost that troop because we discontinued and displaced them.
They displaced them, but I don't know if the troop is still back in the rock.
So for example, Girl Scouts, say the Girl Scouts. If they approached us and wanted to use our buildings, what is the policy, what is the process for them to use the church building?
There is none.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna establish now. But you, we just said it's not recommended for the Events Place.
If you're talking about a one-off event, you know, just this, this event, but if you're talking about routinely meeting there, I think it would be bad form to allow that, only to tell them within a month, two months, three months, that now they're gonna have to discontinue. That was where I was coming from.
Understood.
But can you allow use of the facility? Yes, you can allow use of it.
Okay, so moving back to the church. What is the process for, one, is it the same process as the Events Place? Will we rent it out?
There is no process.
Okay, so let's get that started. Great, so it's on the agenda for discussion. I think we own city structures that are vacant, maybe eight months out of the year. We only use it for camp, we had major renovations, I think, and the election, starting this year, right? Okay, so all these years it was vacant. We renovated it. It's only being used for less than two months out of the year. I think we should consider, council, I'm asking you to consider usage of our facilities. And we could start with nonprofits right now that bring service and value to our citizens. We already have our parks, and many people are complaining that our Grays Mill parks are locked and padlocked up. I agree with them. I don't know. I still am trying to figure it out, because when we charge our nonprofits, those issues or concerns are no longer.
They sign a hold harmless agreement and also have their own insurance when they get the special event permit. It's part of the process.
Okay, so if I go to Ben Strickland Park and use it and I injure myself, what is the difference with someone using the Grays Mill Park without a hold harmless?
We can let legal explain that.
Okay.
A hold harmless is going to shield the city from liability. If there's an accident that occurs at Ben Hill Strickland Park and it's not, there's no hold harmless in place, there is a possibility that they will sue the city to claiming some element of negligence or some nuisance or some danger. That's, that's just a reality of having parks.
So we can, so is it possible for us to unlock these part, the Grays Mill Park without a hold harmless, the same way people are able to use Ben Strickland?
If it is the council's desire to open up Grays Mill, my recommendation would be first that we remove anything from the park that can be considered a safety hazard, because at that point, we are saying that everything is ready to go at Grays Mill, that it is safe, people can conduct themselves without or with minimal concern for injury. And with the bleachers that we have in place at the ball field, the bleachers that are at the entry gate over from the other side of where the church is coming up the hill, those would be one of the first things that I would recommend, that we commission a contractor to remove. And then take a look at the grades of the different slopes that are available there and either put railing up or regrade it so that it's a more gentle slope, so that people are not going to be able to accuse us of having a dangerous fall area.
Could we incorporate that, what you're discussing, removing those harmful obstacles, I'm sorry. Could we, right, can we include that in the first phase of our redevelopment of Grays Mill Park?
I'm certain it will be.
And where are we at with GDOT? What's GDOT saying?
We are still waiting on, we have a bid out, I believe, we've had a bid for the sewer.
Yes, bid was.
Which is what GDOT's waiting on.
GDOT is waiting for us to find a contractor. The bid was initially gonna be open tomorrow, but we had to extend it to Monday.
Okay. Making some progress. That's awesome. Okay, back to the church. So we have the opportunity to discuss now whether or not we want to allow usage for nonprofits. Are you guys with it or not? Is there any benefit that you guys see in allowing nonprofits to use? I believe one nonprofit is already using it, correct?
No, ma'am.
Oh, the pioneers are still at the Events Place and they're using it multiple times a month, correct?
That part I don't know. I haven't asked you.
I think it's a weekly basis.
I think she said that's, that's right.
Yeah, I think that's a weekly basis. So they are, I guess, grandfathered into the usage of Events Place. Others are
They have been allowing.
Not, are discouraged. Okay, so let's move away from the Events Place. It makes sense what you said. So the usage of our Grays, of our church. I'd like for council to weigh in on this. Do you think it brings value to allow nonprofits' usage?
Could we lock the bottom where nobody could go upstairs?
It's already locked that way.
It is? Because I could see people trying to explore.
No, it's fine. You said the bottom was locked.
It is not.
Door, but it's not locked yet.
It is not secure.
That is new to me. I apologize.
Anyone else?
I'd like more information. Are there any concerns that you have, Jody or Melissa or?
Chief.
Chief, yeah.
What do we store upstairs that could be tampered with?
It's not had very much modification since having acquired it from the church. The bench pews, we put them on for trying to dispose of them through cell. We've had very mild, maybe cold interest in it and have been very difficult to move. So they still occupy that area up top. The general consideration was the top was originally gonna be used for a training facility for law enforcement. I think Chief still has plans on that actually coming to fruition at some point. And of course, the bottom has been renovated and also renovated again when we had the fire in order to conduct summer camp there. So there is space there. There, we could probably figure out a way to, basically, it's the stairwell entrance from the bottom floor to the top floor. We do have a door at the bottom that was placed there in order to help keep the kids from going up and down the steps. But it would be best probably to isolate use of the building to that lower floor.
We could even insert like a stipulation within the contract, the terms of the contract, restricting them from usage from the second floor. Could we do that?
You can. There will be nobody there to monitor.
Okay, so there's nothing that can be tampered with there to explore. We could put some tape. There's a way, is there a way that we can use the building and just deal with the issue of people going upstairs?
If the council determines that they want to allow that to occur, then we would figure out how to best do that within the confines of safety and best management practices for it.
Okay. So council, if safety and we are able to successfully restrict usage of the second floor, would you guys be in favor? Do you see value in allowing nonprofits to utilize the building?
Nonprofits aren't, maybe some type of bad, because it's a nonprofit. But I guess the main thing is safety. And what type of uses, I mean, upstairs?
No, we already use the upstairs. It would be the downstairs. We spent so much money on that building and to operate it 12 months out of the year, its operating cost involves. A return of investment would be to allow our citizens to, or nonprofit organizations, I'm sorry. Nonprofit organizations to bring value. It doesn't cost us any more than it does to allow usage at the Events Place. Just carry that whole thing over to the church building.
But then if somebody does rent it and they keep on coming back to rent it, do we tell them they're not allowed to have it for, whether it's a June, July? we tell them they're not allowed to have it for, what is it, June, July?
Yeah, it's like a calendar, like we do the Events Place. We have vacancy, here's a vacancy, oh, there's a vacant, oh, you guys can utilize it here the same way we use the calendar for the Events Place, we apply that to the church. I think we could do that. What do you think, Melissa?
That's totally up to you all.
No, I mean, as far as the concept of planning usage of it.
Yeah, those would be blackout dates.
Okay, we could black that out.
For nonprofits.
For nonprofit? So do we apply the same $10, the nominal fee that we have to charge? Would it be the $10?
Do our people still have to go to the Event Place and do the cleanup and stuff?
The renters are supposed to clean their own, but of course, our staff would still always go in to.
They would have to do the same thing.
Yes. That's what I would recommend. Again, you guys set an entire policy for property owners.
So there would be additional costs for them for salary?
Right now, the ones at the Events Place are $10 an hour.
Right.
And Jody, your only concern was access to the upstairs, which you're saying we can mitigate that?
I would just, just to ensure that, you know, when we are ready to begin, I mean, right now, even with the church pews in there, it's possible to hold class there. We just would have to work on the data as well as some of the other setups, but I know the chief has desks and things that could be moved in and I assume would be at some point in order to have a classroom environment there. Of course, we would want to safeguard those things for the city's use.
You have to renovate those bathrooms upstairs.
Yes, there is some renovation that would have to take place.
But, you know, but everything downstairs has been renovated. We invested a great amount of money in it, ADA compliant, so we're good to go on the first level, right?
Downstairs.
Downstairs, the first level, the bottom level, the first level, the downstairs. So, okay. So, all right, do we have, is that consent? I know at the end we're going to have to figure this out. I just don't know where we are.
I have the same policy.
Okay, so the policy, can we just mirror what we have at the Events Place?
Of course you can.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay.
That would be your motion on the seventh.
Okay. Okay.
And of course, you're free to have discussions between now and the seventh among yourselves to determine, you know, what you would like to see in the meeting or in a group.
As you are aware, I send out emails and sometimes nobody responds, so.
I'm going to talk to Kathy as well, to see if she has any concerns with the Camp Hornet equipment investment in there too.
Those are discussions that need to take place before, you know, we jump into something we need to discuss with all.
I disagree. I think it's important to have it here in the public, so the public knows how we're operating. So if we're talking about opening doors, opening our parks, and we have it behind closed doors, not behind closed doors, but.
Talking about behind closed doors.
I, not, we moved it behind closed doors.
No, give me my time to speak.
Why was talking?
We would talk to these people, the people who actually function in there, you need to talk with them to see what their usage is and if they have anything that needs to be moved, rearranged, or whatever. That's not hiding anything. That's asking the people who actually use.
No, but a lot of ideas get closed, shut down before it comes to the public. That's what I'm saying. I like to have conversations out here, so we can have these conversations and they don't dwindle and get lost in emails and nobody responds. I like to have it out here so we can have, this is a discussion night, so I think it's appropriate to discuss out here.
Okay, I'm going to ask you a question. What are you going to do if he wants this outside? How are you going to work that?
You should have asked him, he was here.
You're talking about the nonprofits.
He's talking about not indoor usage. She's asking to do it up front, so he's manning it.
I know, but how are you going to have that type of?
But that's, but he said it's a public event.
So that's a special use permit that would go.
That's right, we have to go in.
So I don't have anything to do with it.
Okay, well, I just didn't know, because you were saying it was a nonprofit, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, but because it's open to the public, it's, it has to meet those regulations. That I get. I just want.
I just can't see how he can open it to the public, but there can only be 60 people come in.
No, like.
That's on him.
Yeah. Not that, I definitely.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Can I ask you a question? What's going on now? That's just between the council? Don't have nothing to do with us?
Oh, no. Well, I mean, if you, you needed to use, usage of something, or you knew somebody that wanted to use one of our city structures in our city or outside of our city word of mouth, so it affects all of you in some kind of way.
All right, so let me, let me take it, I gather, from what I've gathered, you spent like over, close to $600,000 between these two buildings to re-renovate them, right? How much money did you actually get back to put towards that renovation? So what you're saying is, I understand what you're saying, let's get some of that money and put it back into the budget, put it back into the budget, because as she had said before, we're, say, the higher money getting a 1.7 million dollars. So let's generate some of this money, come up with charities and stuff, bring it to the city, so we don't have to depend on the county.
I appreciate that. So because it's restricted to nonprofits, we try to make it feasible for them to use it and bring that value, because we're getting the value for our citizens at no cost. So in order for us to keep that way, we, it doesn't make sense to charge nonprofits because they're bringing something that is helping our citizens. However, if we opened up this discussion for for-profit, right, we could use that bottom renovated building for communal workplace, where you charge memberships for people to sit in their cubicles, the way it's set up. Those are just ideas that we can throw around, you know, just ways, oh, I'm sorry, we can't because we're using it for our admin. No, we're not. So our admin are moving into two different buildings. So, yeah, we can have that discussion for for-profit where people are paying a membership and have communal, like, a workspace. You know, hey, you want to work here in the quiet, you don't want to work at home, you don't have, people are working remotely, this is a great time to try to, you know, put that out there. That's, that's one way we can make a little money. It's not much, but it helps our citizens get a little bit. I don't know, those are things that are great to have discussion on.
I want to add too, before we get too further to leave the item, part of this discussion was also the Red Cross blood drives. So there is a decision to be made if you want them to fall under the same $10 fee or per hour, or if you would grant them, as happened before at the Events Place, to have those community blood drives. So that is also on the table for you all to.
I'd like to hear my council weigh in on the Red Cross. I think they bring a great service. I know one is a city sponsor and the others are not, are all being charged or none being charged?
I don't know, what do you mean by city sponsor and some are not?
So when I, when Red Cross, there was a different organization that was doing blood drives under the umbrella of Red Cross.
Carol.
I, is that, it is. We did, we approved. However, I believe they are subjected or not subjected to a fee?
They are not, because you all approved them that way.
Okay, so they are nonprofit, but they're not the Red Cross, but they work for the Red Cross. So that's why we, right, okay.
You do the same for a firefighter association, I believe it was, the firefighter association that you allow that to.
And whatever the, yeah, whatever the council says.
China, do you have a concerned agenda items?
Before we get to said agenda, there was a part of public participation, a public question.
Public participation on agenda items, but no one signed up.
Okay, all right. Well, Cameron came in late and then he left because he was sick.
You have to sign up before the meeting starts.
Okay, all right.
For item number six, the rezoning, I have new business. For item number seven, the GMA loans, new business. For the removal of fencing around Ben Hill, new business. The additional funding for Harris Drive, new business. Electronic document management, consent. Sanitation ordinance, new business. Faith and Blue Weekend, consent. And 76 Seaboard Street, new business.
And on 76 Seaboard Street, I was thinking of making that more than one item because of the Red Cross approval, and then the other piece of it to mirror the Events Place nonprofit other organizations' policy. Is that acceptable?
And Mr. Mayor, if I can add too, just a reminder, there'll be an annexation issue as well for new business in regard to the Tretin Homes. And just a reminder, when it comes to any zoning that involves annexation, the annexation vote is had first. If the annexation is approved, then you handle the zoning approval or denial. If annexation is denied, there's no reason to reach the zoning issue. Tiffany, you requested the executive session, but we've already dealt with that.
Yes.
Do you want to forego that?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to forego the executive session this evening. October 7th will be the regular session at 6:00 PM here in the municipal annex. Derek, you got anything?
I'll keep it really short, Mayor. I'm sorry, I promise, I promise. Okay, wait. So we, it's an exciting time in the city of Hiram. We have elections coming up. We have our incumbent, so we have post four, post five. There's a meet and greet October 11th and the 25th at 1:00 PM at Taco's El Cambre, and that is in Hiram. So that's October 11th and the 25th. All candidates, all candidates will be there. Paulding Chamber of Commerce, there is a member appreciation cookout that is October 2nd at the Paulding County Chamber of Commerce, 11:30 to 1:30. And then the Paulding Chamber Commerce, Paulding County Chamber of Commerce also has their First Friday Vibes on October 3rd with great programming. It's international, intentional networking for members. I think even if you're not a member, you're welcome to come. I'm one of the board members. I welcome you to attend First Friday, and you can come as my guest. And that's all.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one comment. At the candidate meet and greet, I would recommend to ensure that there is not a quorum of the council present.
If they want to come to Florida, I'll meet with them. Another.
Let me ask you, so if he's there as an incumbent, as a candidate, does he count as one, as a quorum?
Yes.
No, he counts as one member of the council.
He still counts as one.
Yes.
My comment was, I will not be here on Tuesday 7th. We'll be in the very capable hands of W.C. clerk China Pryor, so I just wanted to give you that heads up.
Chief, you got anything?
Yes, sir. Police Department has teamed up with a couple of businesses here in town, and we will be doing the trunk retreat on October the 25th, which will give us time to have one separate[1742.37]